Good evening, everyone. Thank you so very much for your presence this evening. I am touched. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that said, we will begin the meeting. We'll call this meeting to order at seven o'clock. If you could pass a second.
I would like to make this to the flag of the United States of America and to declare it the Constitution's one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The question that I'd like to make a motion to by trustee Taylor to participate remotely.
Come on.
Okay, so can you put the follow up?
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
This is my caller, is she on?
Uh, I gave her the number. She had the number. Is she on, uh, on there, Jesse? Okay. Yeah, I gave her both.
There are some seats up here in front. There are seats up at the front.
One in the front, Karen.
We made sure everybody took care of their hygiene, so. Okay, following meeting, um, trustee Taylor. I wanted to make a disability pledge. As a part of our administration, we're committed to fostering a positive, respectful, and collaborative environment. The village of Glenwood is adopting a disability pledge. The purpose of this pledge is to reinforce the values of respect, professionalism, and constructive dialogue in all of our interactions. Among elected officials, the village staff, and with the community, we proudly serve. Effective governance begins with mutual respect. Active listening and a shared focus on solutions that serve the community. I would ask that at this time, that the elected officials that we stand and that we, um, cite the disability pledge as a proactive step, a step to move forward. You should have it in your board package and have it with you if you came in. We provide pledge to, all together, to honor the community's service because God has given us a good background for us. To foster a cultural
Open, honest communication where diverse perspectives are welcome and considered thoughtful.
Commitment to active listening, allowing others to speak without any more permission,
and speaking in a commercial manner before it's done.
Address this grievance.
Professionalism over in the board.
A lot of times, issues are very difficult. Promote transparency.
In accountability and to clear up possible decision making.
To support
A positive and productive environment, a healthy meetings. During the discussion, remain focused, orderly, respectful.
So uphold the values of integrity.
Creativity and service.
And all of the elected officials, uh, appointed officials, the village staff will be asked to a pardon pledge as a visible commitment to these principles. The pledge will also be displayed publicly as a reminder of our expectations for ourselves and to set an example for our community. This initiative reflects my belief that how we engage with one another is just as important as the decisions we make. Together through disability incorporation, we can strengthen, we can strengthen the public trust for us better. So, get back. I have to tell you that he was called the wrong.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Uh.
Trustee Taylor?
She's, she's, she said she's willing to follow her to call.
Yeah, I said. Oh, okay.
Definitely hard or easy as you press zoom.
She doesn't have a tablet.
She wants to just call and give her the number for Zoom. Whatever that, 12, 13, that comes on the box.
Can someone just call, I'm gonna say. Here, the names, I don't even get them, they should hear them. Speaker.
I'm here.
Okay, um, Jesse, bills payable?
Thank you, Mayor, and guess. Um, bills payable for the May ninth, twenty twenty-five corporate was two hundred eighty-six thousand, six twenty-four and eight cents. Motor fuel tax was two hundred two thousand, fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Sewer and water, sixty-six thousand, one oh seven and sixty-two cents. Uh, tips, tip Main Street was one thousand, ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Glenwood Golf Course, thirty-two thousand, three thirty-five and forty-six cents. And then tip Halsted South was twenty thousand, one fifteen and fifty cents. For a total for all funds of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three thirty-five and seventy-one cents.
At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the bills payable for May ninth, twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Come on.
Second.
Awesome.
How do we do it?
I'm sorry.
I have one comment I want to make to you, Your Honor. Could we break down Robinson Engineering bills as more than just tips or, uh, check colors?
What I can do is give you a board package because, uh, the invoices are going on that way. We as a folks who just cut multiple checks, we just spend on, but I'll make sure, uh, June, uh, may twenty.
I appreciate it.
You like the fact that.
You do?
Any other questions, discussion? Call the wrong.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Motion pay S.
Trustee Wade? Uh.
Motion pay S F. Jesse, I'm paying off.
So we have two payrolls this time frame, so the first payroll were the updated April eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Administrative payroll was seventeen thousand, four nineteen and fifteen cents. Public Works, eleven thousand, five seventy-nine and nine cents. Police Department was one hundred nine thousand, six twelve and eight cents. Fire Department, twenty-six thousand, eight forty and twenty-four cents. The Senior Center was two hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Elected positions were six thousand, two seventy-four and thirty-six cents. Sewer and Water, twenty-one thousand, five hundred and four dollars and three cents. And the Glenwood Golf Course, twenty-three thousand, thirty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Uh, for a total payroll of two hundred sixteen thousand, five twenty-one and the best. Um, notables on this payroll were, uh, with overtime, the police, and nine thousand, two sixty-five and ninety-one cents, of which reimbursable was one thousand, seven seventy-eight and ninety-six cents. Uh, Public Works, two hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents. Water Sewer, three hundred eighty-one dollars and eight eighty-seven cents. Fire Department, one hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-one cents. Uh, administrative was twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Golf, two hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Paydown call was eleven thousand, six seventy-six and eighty-seven cents. Economic Development Stipend, four hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Deputy Clerk Stipend, two hundred and seven dollars and two cents. Uh, and that includes the, the first payroll in this package.
At this time, we're looking for a motion to approve the payroll for the check paid, it's in twenty twenty-five, as presented.
Come on.
Second. Call the wrong.
Have a question. I'd like to know how the reimbursable, this overtime is handled. Who ream, how do we submit to, who am I willing to submit to for that reimbursement? Where do we see it when we get that?
So, um, mainly it is for the church and they get invoiced per, uh, deputy, uh, clerk or chief, I'm sorry, chief bank works, um, input for the month, so we do have a monthly basis. The income does not, if the payroll account, it just goes into our distinct income line and the corporate side of the books. Oh, and then step grant money comes directly to our bank account. Um, that does also hit the overtime, but, uh, we do not do anything from that perspective, but we achieve first.
Yes. We add that for the, uh, no, for our transportation, grant, step grant, we have, so we submit our message. Our words done and maybe we're ready to support this.
Thank you. Any other questions, discussion for April eighteen, twenty twenty-five? Call the wrong.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Wade?
Uh.
Motion approved. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the payroll for the check date, May second, twenty twenty-five.
You want me to walk through it?
Payroll for the second payroll, you have to get it.
Okay, so, so the second payroll was for check date, May, uh, second, twenty twenty-five. Uh, administrative payroll was hundred, or sixteen thousand, nine seventy-one and eight cents. Public Works, eleven thousand, five forty-two and ninety-nine cents. Police Department was one sixty-seven, uh, one hundred sixty-seven thousand, fourteen dollars and three cents. Fire Department, twenty-five thousand, one oh one and eighty-nine cents. Senior Department, three hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-two cents. Elected positions, one thousand, seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Sewer and Walker, twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. Glenwood Golf Course, thirty-one thousand, seven ninety-four and twenty-five cents. For a total payroll of two hundred seventy-five thousand, two eighty-two and eighty-five cents. Uh, the notables on this one, uh, with overtime first, the police was nine thousand, two sixty-seven and ninety-one cents, of which reimbursable was two thousand, four forty-eight and four cents. Public Works, two hundred and five dollars and sixty-two cents. Sewer and Water, three hundred eighty-one dollars, thirty-seven cents. Fire Department, one hundred sixteen dollars and twenty-one cents. Administrative, twenty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Golf Course, two hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-two cents. Uh, the paydown call was nine thousand, ninety-sixty-five and twenty-three cents. The economic stipend was four hundred ninety-six dollars, eighty-five cents. The deputy clerk stipend, two hundred seven dollars and two cents. Uh, and then these next two big ones, our next two ones are the two big things driving the big change between two, since you're seeing two payrolls on this. Um, this, we have a weapons proficiency payout, that was eight thousand, one hundred eighty-one dollars and forty cents, and a uniform allowance for thirty-four thousand, uh, and nine, thirty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, and both of those were only in, in the case of perfect.
Questions?
So, those last two amounts, though, those are per the union agreement, right?
Correct.
Questions? I just have a quick question, really small. So there's holiday, uh, zero, like point zero zero, is that a misprint or is that always gonna be there now?
Um, we, we could do a better job of cleaning that up and if it's zero, then that showed up on the part, so. It was zero.
But what's how, are you gonna, like, decipher holiday pay in that?
Yeah, we, we've had holiday pay typically is when we're paying the police department for the, the time for holiday per the contract and that's not another week or every payroll period?
Call the wrong.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Uh.
Motion pays. Now go over it to the public for comments. Um, you could come up. And just state your name, you know, your address, if there's a space there, which you can now address, and if you have your phone number. Good evening.
Right, Lyle? Yeah, yeah, it's all good. Uh, Jan, head now. Uh, I just wanted to say, um, I'm so excited to see all of you here, elected officials tonight. Uh, I'm excited for what's to come for Glenwood. Um, Mayor Hart, I just wanna say to you, uh, the public pre-candidly voted for you and you are entitled to choose who you feel you trust to have your positions, regardless of race, color, creed, orientation, whatever. You make that decision and so the public is giving you that opportunity, so we wish you well with that. With that being said, I'd like to just say something, I'd like you all to think about. Trustee Mosley, trustee Brown, trustee Williams, trustee Taylor, trustee Roll, trustee Hannah, clerk Durkin, mayor Hart. Remember the acronym, THINK. T, is it true? H, is it helpful? I, is it inspiring? M, is it necessary? K, is it kind? If you keep that acronym in mind, you can do good for Glenwood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Burn the clay pot. I said, nine eleven, he's under ninety-three, and I preside there for eighty-eight years. I experienced a home invasion on November eighteenth in Pot Delight. I have been to court for discovery, Mark and Courthouse, over come today. I am very upset over how things are being handled. Um, I arrived on time, nine o'clock, and was told that one of the perpetrators is now in drug treatment program and that a continuance was ordered to June eleventh. What bothers me and has destroyed my peace of mind. I live alone on a same broad daylight. I wanna know where this statistic of my broken has been reported by our village. I'm more upset about the fact that I am, I live alone and even tonight, a neighbor brought me, I'm very early out in the evening. This was in broad daylight. And I had a doctor's appointment, so it was gone right in three hours. And it was extensive and I, I want more information shared because if it happened to me, it can happen to anyone presiding in that room.
I'm so sorry to hear about your traumatic experience, but I will be able to, um, to the medical and we will take your question back to you.
Thank you. In referring to night, I'm having difficulty hearing. I want everyone to please use your mic because I could not hear.
Hey, I'm glad you're so much here. I wanna say, welcome to the new administration. You guys look good and I'm really, really excited. To piggyback off of Janet, I'm excited about our future, the future of Glenwood and having us to see what we're gonna do moving forward. And Mayor Hart, as you were talking about the disability pledge and, um, I, what it meant was very exciting. Okay, I'm inspired. And he's okay, we're gonna read it together as one. I have to be honest and say that was the most effective thing I've heard. From the back, all we heard was like mumbling, mumbling. So I don't know if maybe some people didn't get to reading before the day and weren't ready or if they don't believe in the pledge, I don't know, but I'm just saying, I had every time I got reading, we just better believe it. We're one voice, one sound. And we're speaking because that's what we believe in. So I'm hoping that even though we did with the long voice, one sound today from the, the disability pledge that, um, we're gonna move forward, you know, because like I said, all the people up on the C O D page, we are strong together. So again, I was gonna give up and this to me, but I feel excited about what we're gonna do and I'm looking forward to it and congrats to you and your highness at here. Thank you.
Carrie Durkin. Call me, Anna. I want to congratulate Kevin on his retirement and thank him on behalf of the citizens that aren't here for all he has done for their families when they named him up all under the fire department. I've been to the hospital with them, not often, but I've seen the way his department behaved and their courtesy and generosity of everything that the village gave was through the leadership in that department in the fire service and I, there's five of us up there that he served under and thank you from all.
Good evening, newly elected. Previous officials, I'll be on this side of quoting for once. I do wanna, uh, echo those sentiments, congratulate the chief, uh, on service a little bit. I know we might not agree on a lot of things, but, uh, we serve the community and I appreciate you. So, uh, wish you well over time. I'll just do things, um, just one, first one, just kinda trip it over from the previous administration and it doesn't have to be an answer now, but just another suggestion. Uh, he can either add open to the public at the end of the action items or add two sentences for it, because I think a lot of times when the bottom floor, because I remember if I was on board, is that oftentimes when the discussion's happening, uh, all the residents might have had a question initially, sometimes they might not understood what was on the agenda. Following a conversation, might have prompted more conversation. So, just as a suggestion, you can consider that. Uh, and I wanna thank you, Ms. Hannah, for making a statement about the mayor having appointed to, to make whom she does and I wholeheartedly agree that that is a, a right that may deserve in her, in her seat, so I appreciate that. But as a former left official, um, not only is it mayor's one, but it's also trustees' responsibility to consent and to hold those appointees accountable, uh, for whatever good or bad they do. And so I hope that as whomever is appointed, that trustees are doing their diligence and are also held accountable. Uh, as I do while I was on the board, I think if you do so, we know as well as, I guess, the Senate, I think we should speak up to whomever it is and dress our issue as it is. So, uh, thank you, congratulations to you all, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
One other plaque, forty-three with my father. I've always tried to speak to the board prior to work about finances and expectation as a resident that we can be informed with the best, most accurate information possible so that you can make the decisions that are accountable, credible, things of that sort. And I must make a, uh, a statement, uh, from the last meeting. Uh, trustee Roll, you asked for an accounting of the motor fuel tax. What was the total amount? And that's the information should have been available to you when you came here. I would expect that you should involve that type of information once you have the most credible, up-to-date information. You looked in your back history two weeks ago about those money balances. We have two weeks, many transactions that happened and it completely wasn't two hundred dollars. It was more than equals less, we don't know. But we would expect that that information would be available. Otherwise, I would expect you to put a table until the information is available. You also asked, could the accountant keep a record of everything that you spent for the motor fuel tax? And he said, no, it's only gonna be available upon invoice. That's not a good answer. Because I don't know if you know how many, how much you voted for in that same fund for the prior week that you came up with money balances. The invoice is one thing, but the accrual is another. So I would expect our county department to have the information for you and not just tell you that I only do it by invoice. The accrual should be provided to you to know exactly what you're voting for. And so I would expect, if you don't have the information that you need, table it. Thank you.
Good evening, Jennifer Birmingham. First, I want to congratulate all of those here who were elected. Congratulations. And before I go further, I do want to thank Chief Welsh for his service. As school board president, when we were going out, I went to Chief Welsh to get the research, to ask questions about the old middle school. He was very helpful, letting me know what needs to be done and what's not, and was not necessary. So Chief Welsh, I do thank you for your service, thank you very much, thank you. I also want, I have a concern. I've brought this concern to the board several times over the past few years and I want to go on record, I'm saying what I've said before. Mayor Gardner failed me as a resident and I feel so he failed others in our community. I've brought before the board several times my concerns regarding the overgrowth, the weeds, uh, I may feel about being revived. I presented my arms before the board as well as pictures of the breakouts that I've had as a result. Time and time again, I even had my attorney to send the board a letter reminding the board that it is your ordinance that's not being, uh, that is not being carried out. I remind Mayor Gardner that several times. I even had him come over my house, he has to come over my house and he can look into the neighborhood. I even had him come over my house. He has to come over my house and he can look into the neighbor's side of the toilet. And help us see all the overgrowth. I am hoping, as I asked Mayor Gardner, if we can work together as neighbors. We are neighbors, let's work in school, we can to be a help to each other. As each one of us maintain our property, it helps the entire village. So once again, I want to say congratulations to all of you. There's a lot of hard work ahead. But I trust that if we are working together and we are looking out for the benefit of the community, we can move forward. Thank you.
Good evening to everyone. Uh, my name is Robert Murdock. I'm in 1102 Wisconsin Street, Glenwood, Illinois. And I'm proud to say that. I'm so blessed to see the people that's on the podium and the roster today. It does my heart well. I don't want you to feel that the things I say might be a political conversation, but it's not. It's coming from a heart. I think that, um, we have a situation where today I was out. And I was on my way in and I happened to see some people, uh, mother and son out, judifying they are. And I go to my house and I made U-turn and came back to speak to them, as neighbors should, that don't know when to try and grieve another. And they were kind enough to have a conversation with me. And I asked them about, uh, judifying the communities coming strategically that Ms. Meows is involved with. And the lady told me, you know, we need to do this because, uh, we haven't had this information before. About the new election taking place like what. She then told me, and I can't remember the name, and she promised me that she would be here tonight. And I don't know if she's here or not, I would love to turn around and see. But before I do, if she is here, she told me she had a conversation with you, Mayor Hart. And that she wasn't pleased, that she challenged you. And I thought it was a personal challenge. But she said she was on the phone, so it was a text back and forth thing. But she said she didn't vote for you. She said that her husband and her husband and you had worked somewhere together and so she don't vote either. And I take a long time to say that. But more importantly, what it was is that she said that she would come, she would get more involved. And what I'm saying tonight is that I hope that we can find some kind of solution where each one teach one. So the example that I'm giving is by me turning back around and go talk to a neighbor who's lived here for twenty-three years. And I never met them or someone before. And yet still that she says that now through our conversation, and I told them my political fight was over with already. So I wasn't trying to give them a political conversation, but I was being very realistic that we need to work with our community. We keep saying one for all within the world, but we're not acting like that. Let's say that some of us, see, I maybe there's some of us in a few. But I guarantee you, I don't know that many on my block, neighbors live there longer than I have. But I just want to see if she's here. She's here, would you raise your hand, please? Don't make me feel disappointed when you. I'm going to go knock on the door again. I'm going to get into one of these meetings so she can meet you personally, okay? That being said, I just hope that we as a community can truly reach out and start touching our neighbors and talking to them. And becoming friends and becoming acquainted with each other like we used to in old days. That's been the, secondly, I was receiving a notice on my phone talking about, uh, smoke, uh, situation taking place with the sewer system. And some of the people asked, that our homeowners association meeting was not available. Uh, they hadn't received any kind of confirmation about it. But it was supposed to start the day after the sixteenth. So if you can, if you have somebody that can explain that to the people that's here, I think they would like to know. Because they're saying that some smoke could come up in your house and I told them, I don't know when you get hot. Smelling your smoke and nothing like that. As if trying to put a smile on their face, because I'm a little stressful up there right now. Y'all breathe dead, right? See, then I'm getting busy standing right now.
Thank you for your time.
Uh, we have people who are in South Hurden, I have two. Want to congratulate those who were elected and, uh, congratulate those who were, uh, leaving office. And, uh, also you, Chief, you do your own job. And, uh, you know, I take a little pride on that too. But, uh, Chief has been a long time and, uh, my wife is known as the boss. He calls her the boss. Um, there is some construction going on and you know, my issue has always been air pollution, water situations. On Potters Road, where we have, is a food cemetery. And at the very south end of that cemetery, there's some construction going on. I have a picture here.
May not be clear, but I'd like you all just pass it and I'll look at it.
I don't know what they're doing, but I am under the impression that they're doing another truck or warehousing situation. I've been here before. And we talked about situations, we had a real good point homeowners association come up and pick numbers. I asked Vic, uh, reports to the board. I've not heard anything back. Uh, I'm the type of person where first of all, I will deal with local government. And if local government does not respond, then I pick it up to the next level. I have talked to some senators. I have talked to, uh, Robin Kelly's office. I have talked to the business from county. Because air pollution and when you have older people. And I'm worried it has a C O P D issue, then it is tough. And the pollution levels can kill you and cause all type of diseases. And I'm not forgetting all of that right now, but I have submitted reports. I've received nothing back from Ron Gardner. Nor the city trustees at time. I had one trustee say it's a nice report, written well, but I did not receive anything back. I am deeply concerned because I asked if the truck truck could be routed away from Glenwood. From the homes. I've even given a warehousing truck to be routed. Nothing has happened. I do not think trucks are being ticketed when they come to Glenwood. When they leave a class two road. And they come into everybody that's home, they should immediately be ticketed. I don't care if you give them a warrant ticket or whatever. But the behavior of these trucks is, uh, it's disgusting. And they come to a rock where we have preschools. They come to a rock where we have conurbrials. They come to a rock where we have seniors who will sit out in front of the, uh, repairment hall, et cetera, et cetera. And they all have to be these schools. Federal government has not helped with us. It's gotten worse since this last election. And right now, there's letters being written from U S P O to Donald Trump. But he wants, they don't want to be allowed to be open those steel wheels. And they're asking if they get away from our pollution. All I stopped though is this way, and I'm saying that, uh, I will fight the fight, but I hope that the new administration will fight that fight with me. We deserve clean air and we deserve clean water. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, we have to move to the new business. Um, first, I don't want to judge you, but it is acknowledged to accept this, uh, notice and confirmation of my retirement. I would like to, um, Chief Kevin.
Mayor Hart, this letter serves to confirm our recent discussion regarding my retirement from the position of fire chief for the village of Glenwood. My official retirement date will be effective May twenty, twenty twenty-five. I remain available to support a school transition and can be contacted regarding any pending matters of any part in it. It is a true honor and privilege to serve both the village and the fire department. I am proud of the work I have accomplished and confident in passing the torch to the next generation with the department being as strong as standing. Please let me know if there's any further information or action needed to complete this transition.
I have worked with the chief for years. And, um, have observed and witnessed, um, his due diligence and his work. Um, he won't be missed because he will not be going very far. Um, so that, um, he will be around and we will, uh, at a later day announce a retirement, uh, celebration for him to honor his commitment, his dedication to the residents. Um, to the village, to the employees. And we look forward to building on the foundation that he has left. We appreciate you. Thank you. Uh, at this time, I'm looking for, um, a motion to accept the notice and confirmation of the fire captain's retirement.
I'll make that motion.
Any questions?
Don't say no now. Where do you want the party?
I'm very, I'm from.
Trustee Brown.
I do not want you to retire. I'm just joking. Yes.
Trustee Hannah, yes. Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
I.
I ask. Yes, um. I'm looking for a motion to confirm the appointment of Olson Murphy, our junior sheriff, to serve as the assistant of the general officer.
I'll make that motion.
I'll go.
Questions? That in the, um, in the board's packet, you had an introduction letter, you had the engagement appointment, you had the fact sheet to be able to, um, to wait, to be able to do it. Um, I'm very, I'm from.
Trustee Brown.
Before that.
Sorry, before I, uh, say my vote, it's a lot to read. Um, I know that I'm not prolific in attorneys for the law. But I would have liked an opportunity to read a little bit more about the law firm. So let me ask you a question, um, Mayor Hart. Are all four of these lawyers that's on the page going to represent us? Which one is it going to be? Two, three, one? Or the whole, I mean, like who sits up here, for example? The question, um, that through my, uh, who are first answering your question, Olson Murphy, for the, the Mrs. Partner, that is the name of the firm. Um, Ross Seckler and Fulcher Frager, uh, will be the representative. Uh, with a particular firm, it gives us access to have some diversity. So that whenever those legal questions are fed as opposed to a one, uh, one, um, they all model, we would have access to have some diversity. So we will have access to, um, that diversity. Were they, were there any other law firms that you looked at other than them, you really have confidence? Or you preferred them over any other law firm that you could have chosen? That through my knowledge of our work, I have become familiar with their dedication to give back to the community they represent. I have been particularly impressed, as I said, in having a diverse team collaborating, uh, approach with our firms. Uh, and focusing on the child, municipalities, uh, resources that are used effectively. Also in looking at that other firms are working with, from our department or that you're getting access to more than six, uh, currently qualified attorneys. Uh, but no, well, they, I still want to play in the, uh, prior firm. So in answering the question, I am confident in, um, their technical inability to serve, um, the village. One more question, I think. So we have access to six of them, correct? Two of them will be on retainer for the village. Or, or, or one, or you interchange, like, well, one can't come, like Felicia will be here, or he can't come. Mr. Jones, we're trying.
Et cetera. Um, we have attorney Frager standing there. That she can speak more to the representation of that, but we have access to all the partners.
Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for allowing us the opportunity to, um, I just, I, and I know that's a lot to. It's a lot to absorb when you have the information in front of you, but since I'm here, I figured I could come before you and I could tell you a little bit about myself. I've been with, um, I am one of the main partners on that firm. I am Frager's, my little help. And I'm very proud of that. In my prior life, I was an assistant state attorney, um, in domestic violence. And I've been with a firm for twenty-five years. My areas of expertise were, um, I head the departments of labor and employment, municipal work. I represent several municipalities in the South suburbs. The village of Matson, Calumet Park, University Park, I took Dalton. Um, I also am head of our school division and additionally, also present here is, is my partner Ross Seckler. So to answer the question, um, as far as who would be the main contacts on the account, it would be myself and Ross. Because you do have the two meetings every month, Ross split those meetings. Um, and if we ever, if, if someone is sick or, you know, we, we both are able to, um, stay abreast of what's going on in the village. So we would be your main contacts. But because our firm is pretty much a one-stop shop. If you have PTAB work, it goes to the department that handles the PTAB. If you have, um, economic development, it goes to the, the, um, partner or the attorney that handles the economic development. And so that's the, the great thing about our office is that we can pretty much handle everything in our office. We have twenty-three attorneys, we have litigation divisions. So of course, the, um, Michael Graff, who's a main partner, hits litigation. If you have litigation and we're handling it, Mike hits it and he assigns it out to the attorneys. And we always be abreast of what the other person is doing. So there's never, if you, you know, typically if, if Ross is coming to the meeting, he's going to, if, you know, if I was at the last meeting, you know, I don't know what's going on. So that everyone, um, is abreast of what's going on. If you have any questions for me, um, please feel free to ask me or Ross. But, um, you know, we are excited about the possibility. This is what we do. We are experts in the area. And I don't think that you would find another firm that could meet our caliber of attorneys. I am a little bit biased, but I think, um, I, I think that, um, it's all, it's actually a very honest and accurate thing as well. So feel free to answer any questions if you have.
How do you spell your name?
F, F, first, F V L I C I A. Yes. I saw your name. You don't see too many of us spell the way that you do.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Her name is, you stated that your firm are multiple municipalities. Are you able to tell us exactly how many?
We're about twenty to twenty-five. And we also represent old districts, park districts, townships. So, um, it's about twenty. Yes, um, as a general counsel, some of you just do the labor work, um, some of the special work. But yes, as general counsel, it's about twenty. Yes.
So do the meetings ever overlap? Our meetings are the first and third two days. So a lot of the municipalities, you know, their meetings are sometimes gathered, do they overlap or does that close a scheduling problem?
It's never a scheduling problem for you guys. It'll, it'll be our scheduling problem and we don't enable that. And that's what Ross and I. I were able to do with this particular account, because we, that's the first thing that we looked at was, okay, whatever the meetings, and does, you know, does it conflict with anything else? But there are some of our meetings where we can send some of the associates, because, you know, they know the account and it's not a new account, and they, you know, they go in or step in for us a few years, so, no, it won't be a problem for you, but that's why I said, Ross and I, because you do have the two meetings.
Now, so trustee Brown, there is your engagement, that you have, that he's our first. I was just making her know that it wasn't made known that the first and the third is our lead or representation of the constituency.
This is my last question. So my only concern, I'm very impressed with you, you're an issue awesome, but I'm very impressed with what you've told us so far. My only concern is that you have so many municipalities, I know it's divided between the two of you, but then you just said, like, if you two can't make it, then you can send one of the other twenty-three. So my, I think that, or somebody else can come from the firm. Let's see, if you can come, I know you're going to split, that's what you said at first. If you can come, he can come, if he can't come, you can come. If neither one of you can come to represent us on a given Tuesday, I think that I heard you say that you would send someone else from the firm. Did you, did I hear that correctly?
No, when I was referencing the sending someone else, it was with the other accounts that I have, that we've had for a while, that where she was asking that there was a meeting that would conflict with your meetings, and that's what I said, it's not going to be your issue, it'll be our problem to figure out, and that's what we've already done. We've had that discussion prior to coming tonight. The only way that you would have it where it wouldn't be either myself or Ross, for some reason, we both were on vacation at the same time, and if that happened, Berg would be owner of the firm, we'd lose it. So that's not going to probably happen, or if both of us were sick at the same time, something like that. But it would be either Ross or myself, unless it was just a very, you know, an isolated case of some, you know, or we had to, you know, attend a function of some sort, but other than that, it would be us.
How long is the representation, Mayor Hart, through your term? Correct? It's always through the term of the city mayor, unless you're unsatisfied or something?
No, and you'll only review all contracts to a test that's needed and to see if that's meeting.
Thank you.
So we'll review in six months, and then annually, then we will relook at the process.
Do you have any questions, Chris? Thank you so much. I'm going to stay.
Trustee Hannah, yes. Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Sarah.
No.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next agenda item, I'm going to be invited to the upcoming transition. I'm requesting a formal confirmation of deputy fire chief Kevin Walsh Jr. to assume role within the fire department. Deputy Chef Junior has dedicated nearly two decades to the department and has met all the necessary qualifications for this leadership position. His promotion will ensure continued instability within the fire department operations due to this period of change disappointment, will also allow me to work closely with the newly appointed fire chief, as we both have acclimated to our respective roles and focus on delivering high-quality product safety, services, and capable of possible resource management. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to accept the appointment of deputy fire chief Kevin Walsh.
So. Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Hannah, yes. Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Brown.
Yes.
Trustee Sarah.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Alright.
Didn't have a speech prepared. I just want to thank you for this opportunity. Looking forward to the challenges ahead and, I don't know where you're looking right now, maintaining fiscal responsibility and being through and continue to build on the services that you've been offering so far. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
So that you know, at the June, not June, at May twenty of next, we will actually do the official surrender and the appointment of the mayor's seat. Next agenda item, at this time, I'm requesting a motion for the appointment of interim village administrator, James J.R. Patton, to serve as the interim village administrator, while I conduct a comprehensive assessment of the village firm administrative structure and determine the most effective way to utilize this role to meet our long-term service need. During this interim period, J.R. will provide oversight, police department, public works, and body golf course. This will allow me to concentrate on the fire department, human resources, and the fiscal department, as I continue to transition into my role as mayor. While I have not worked directly with J.R., I am well acquainted with his leadership and municipal expertise through my nonprofit profit engagements in Calumna City. His extensive experience and proven ability to provide effective oversight will be invaluable as I take the next six months to fully acclimate and evaluate the village operational needs at every level, the compensation package, but this interim appointment will be prorated as six-month term at aligned salary. It will not include any medical, health, life insurance benefit, or a company card.
I need to get this, sorry, but I didn't get the information until last time, okay? Okay. Well, I didn't get this information until last time, okay? I have some concerns, but I received some formal laws today, things I'd like to discuss that if I could have another week's, I'd work a meeting, next week I would feel much better.
In the interim and the second time moving the village forward, I would, you know, ask that.
And I was expecting a witness to come here tonight, but somebody hasn't showed up, but I will make my case.
If we can, that on the air, I was looking for a motion to confirm the appointment of interim village administrator. In an effort to move the village forward, it is my, as I indicated, this is an interim that we will do a comprehensive assessment to do a national search, but in the meantime that we need to have someone that I can work with on the day-to-day and explain those departments forward. So I would like to have a motion on the floor to.
For who?
So who did I get?
Look, you call the role.
Trustee Brown.
So do you just bypass, I'm asking for real, do you just bypass his table motion?
We have someone to cause the motion. One that's just called to vote, to give what's called to vote. I don't see a need that we need to table. We had an open discussion about the concerns, there may be regarding my request for motion on the floor. So we are here to have to address the questions and to any concerns that you have. If there's a motion, we can have that discussion.
Is it possible to discuss this in closed session?
To have that working members open discussion of any.
So I would like to see J.R. Seckler to report his question.
We have a first and a second. We have a first and a second. If you have any questions, we have Mr. Patton to come on, if you want to address any questions with him, if you want to, you have the resume, and so if you want to come on, if there's any questions for him, I. Would like to have any questions?
I believe that before we vote on any, or vote on any department head interim or permanent, that the goal or the role of the trustee is also to give the advice and consent to the mayor before we put anyone in that type of position. That's just, that's just kind of protocol. We, we, I got your credentials late last night, and didn't realize that till this morning, and then I worked all day. I have, I'm just prefacing by saying this, I have not had a chance to thoroughly look at your resume, I haven't had an opportunity to look at your credentials. I skimmed some of it, I know that you went to Calumna City, I know that you ran for mayor, I know that you have some experience in this capacity, but I have not had, and I, I can vote, but I'm just saying, I have not had the opportunity. I'm making this statement before I ask the question, because we have a right to do that. My question is, what is the salary? We asked for an executive close session, but you didn't give us that, just to talk amongst ourselves, so we can, okay? Mike, Mike.
I'm sorry. The salary of village administrator is public information, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars, it's a temporary position, then salary will be.
What is your first one-hundred days look like in the village you're going with?
Sure, thank you, trustee Brown, for that question, and all of you, thank you all for allowing me to jump forward and address you and answer your questions. The first hundred days for me is going to be working hand-in-hand with Mayor Hart, as well as all six of you, the board of trustees. Obviously, the first portion of that is going to be learning the way around really tall the employees and the staff that are here, and identifying needs and areas of improvement or things that are really correct. So the first hundred days for me are going to be, again, working hand-in-hand with the mayor, as well as you all assessing the situation here in the village, and starting to chart a course forward, put a plan together. So I hope that anybody coming into a position like this interim basis is not going to come in here until you, with the village needs, because I'm not going to be able to stand here tonight until you, sorry, move it forward. The first thing I need to do is come in, listen, assess, and work with the mayor, as well as the six of you, to chart a course forward. So that's, the short answer to your question is the first hundred days is going to be learning, getting up to speed as quickly as I can, and making this up.
A little awareness in respect to, in terms of this, like, outside of public. For me, I have questions that I'd like to ask you in the close session, my colleagues and I, and it's a little more of a question that I'd like to ask, because as a trustee, it is our jobs, we're the villages, you'll be in charge of dealing with your finances and have access to information, you know, it's a big deal to us. And so for me, I have questions, I have things that, you know, I would like to talk to you, for me, for me to make a decision. I'd like for us to meet in the close session, in working these, and make a vote in your neighbor. Those are some of mine.
Trustee Brown, I can indicate in my that in this interim position, Mr. Patton will oversee the way, the police department and public works. I will maintain the finance department, human resources, and the fire department. So he would not be handling the finance department. Whatever questions or research you have, I will maintain the responsibility of that concession.
And you said that interim is six months, correct? And she can make a decision to, yes or no, like I said, yes.
Yeah, I do have. I know I heard you say that you work with him on some nonprofit work.
No, I did not say that. I said, well, I have not worked with him directly, I am commended with his work through us, while I'm the CEO of the nonprofit charter agency program in Calumna City, and I did have a relationship with the prior mayor, while also I have a relationship with the current mayor, being the top representative of Charles.
Was Mr. Patton willing to be at stake, or how is this allowed?
Through one, working in the prior knowledge and being able to loyalty and trust is very high in this position to that I did not want to just go and sit to have a pride in the seat. I wanted to make sure that I can make an assessment, so that we don't shoot ourselves in the foot as we have in the past, to be able to have someone there, as this is a part-time role, to have someone in the seat that can take that direction to. that can take that direction to implement, uh, our vision and giving that opportunity to make a fair and full assessment to bring addition on information for, uh, what that position should actually look like and who would be so that we can have the right person in the seat. Don't get me wrong, that's a good point.
I do agree with your analysis that, um, you know, to hire a politician and, um, I guess I was just trying to understand how people selected, um, in, in the process.
Um, like anything else, so assessment, you not looking at what it is that I have to be, um, as the city mayor. To accommodate myself to the role, um, and having someone that is important to have experience that can also hit one on one.
So in six months, if you've had selected one, what's, what I was asking?
That, um, we will come back to the board, but as I believe in having part of the assessment, those are things that we can talk about on a monthly basis and it's not going to, to wait until the deadline, right, to be able to do that. So I will be continually assessing one day.
So is Mr. Patton going to be considered for, um, office tenure with us at this, or is that about facility?
That we will do a search and certainly, um, that everyone is welcome to apply. And based on what it is that needs this, um, if we're talking hypothetical, um, then we may need to just change the job description, right? If we, uh, as an administrator, that if the issue became that, that also included having a, uh, chief financial officer, we won't really know what we don't know until we really go into a comprehensive assessment as opposed to making jack searches for, you know, the, uh, the village needs and not the needs of the community.
Right, I'll call the question.
Okay, um, call the question from, or can you, um... More call.
I am voting just for the six-month interim that you have suggested. Can you please call it to order?
Call it to order.
Because we just did the civility pledge.
Public, can we please, um, give, um, the floor to the trustees to, uh, vote without comments? Thank you. Trustee Brown?
Thank you, and I do believe in the civility pledge. Thank you so much. I think it's great. I will vote for the six-month interim as what you set on. The answer is yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Rowland?
I understand.
Trustee Taylor?
Yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yeah.
It's a time. I'll break the time. Oh, yes. The next, um, uh, agenda item is, uh, appointments. And again, the appointments that we made, we will do the official swearing-in for the appointments on, uh, May 20th, the regular scheduled meeting. Uh, I would, I am looking for a motion to appoint to the fire and police commission, uh, Roger Murdaugh. We have the floor, and, um, if everyone can call the row, let me get a motion, let me get a motion.
Second.
Questions? Okay. But everyone, you call the row?
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Rowland?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yeah.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
I request an, uh, confirmation to appoint fire and police commission, Leon Lynch.
I'll first.
Second. Questions? Uh, governor is called the row?
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Rowland?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Uh.
Thank you. Um, second, I, uh, am requesting confirmation appointment to the finance committee, um, Melinda White. Questions? Governor is called the row?
Trustee Brown?
Epstein.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Rowland?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Uh.
Thank you. I'm requesting confirmation, uh, appointment to the finance committee, senior advisor, uh, Leon Moore.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Rowland?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Uh.
Thank you. Uh, I am requesting confirmation of appointment, uh, to the finance committee as, as, um, trustee Michelle Mosley.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Capital question. What is that? I mean, what would be your responsibility as a board liaison to the finance?
I will report back to the board what happens in the finance committee.
Won't the finance committee tell us if we're at the finance? Oh, am I supposed to talk directly to her or should I ask, should I address you? I, I just don't want to, you know, I just want to make sure I'm in. I, I, I can, I can trust you. Okay. Oh, I can address you. Okay. So can you just, I mean, she just said that she will come back to the board to discuss what happened in the finance committee as a liaison. If we're in the finance committee meeting, won't we already, won't the finance committee, you know, does their, like, that? Just tell me how it works.
Just ask the liaison, it's just that because she's a board member, um, that, uh, in the finance committee is not a recommended body. Um, just as you said, it's a liaison. She'll be the one who's at the board, um, with regards to respect of what transpires in there. Um, so that we have an instant of taking to that kind of stuff. So once we, um, visit, um, the ordinance and what that is, that is how that the board that's, um, will ensure that we get information in a time, in a timely fashion and to keep us on track.
Thanks.
Any other question? Well, I can call the row.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Uh.
Um, thank you, but that is new business. Do we have any old business? I would like to share, uh, old business, just to, we're under, and then, um, see the information that, um, Saturday, May seventeenth, from ten AM to two PM, we're hosting, um, mayor's office in Village Trustee. We're hosting a community, uh, unity brunch at Glenwood Golf Course. We will have Dr. Keeshan DeCasse, who's the new county commissioner there, with a resource table. It is, I have intention to be collaborative partners, um, with our surrounding neighborhood, uh, communities, with the mayor's communities, as well as our elected official with the township, with the local township, with the libraries, with the schools, uh, and with the business and highlighting those monthly. So there will be, we're so thankful there so that we can educate the public regarding information that we can use, um, here in, um, the village of Glenwood. At that time, we also will be seeking volunteers to serve on various village committees while gathering the community's feedbacks and their ideas and looking at, um, how to fill not only, uh, the vacant committee positions, but also, uh, vacant positions here within Glenwood. It's important to have your ideas, um, to listen to what your voice is. And so we invite you out, invite a neighbor to join us at the community unity brunch on Saturday. Uh, also that we have here, um, the CEO of Glenwood County, Mary Hopely. I sent you a letter, but I wanted to extend my sincere, um, thanks to you and the color cars, uh, for their presentation of unity, uh, at the Sarah and Lori. And then I just need to say I have, uh, turn the election even me on my toes. We had number seven, the resolution of the civility, but we will, um, we will take them out until the May twentieth to be able to pass that petition, so that it is public on our website. It will be publicly displayed.
Yeah.
And then we also would ask the community, a part of that, also the, the civility branch. So, um, with that, uh, old business.
Wait, hang on. I, I got a couple of things to say on this business. One is that, um, a resident of Glenwood, as well as a relative of mine, had her dog mauled, um, on Mother's Day by a pit bull in Glenwood, that has been documented by the police department that this dog has had multiple, um, multiple complaints from the neighborhood. It has attacked several other dogs before. The resident, even though it's been fined, has never paid a fine. And I'd like to know for other people that have their dogs attacked, et cetera, what do we do when a dog, it's a dog, it's not a human, it's a dog that continues to aggressively attack, is dangerous, lives by the park. Um, another woman was running from the dog. Somebody called the police and said the resident was screaming. They heard her screaming because she was trying to fight the pit bull after her dog didn't succeed, and the dog is near death right now. I'd like to know, what do we do about vicious animals or dogs like that? How many more fines do we have to give before that dog is taken out of the house or taken out of this world?
What we have to do, if we have dog, that's a major problem, I think it may just, uh, our offices. The owner will have, uh, very busy, probably clients with, demanding, uh, structure to keep the dog confined to the concrete ban, six-foot fence. Not to be, without, uh, outside of the house, without, uh, muzzle and proper, uh, leash, less than, or nowhere than three foot and nine. And we'll have to have any, uh, insurance policy on that. Another step that we go through is to try and go through the courts to get a court order. To do that, we need to have, can't keep the dog with the court order, we have to be, uh, an professional, veteran, area, uh, assessing to give a declaration that if dog is vicious, to get a court order to try and have the, uh, dog, if the animal sees and put down, which is very challenging. Hopefully, the owner will realize that to, uh, come into compliance with our ordinances, they will either just won't keep the dog in their property, it's been out, which, as you said before, people have responses to that, or they will, uh, hook up the animal somewhere else outside of Glenwood. So with this, that, we are working on this. We have signed it up. I know that. If you can sign it, you can, uh, we could, and we could put, uh, means on property, property, things like that, that get affected, you know, when the house goes to sale. And then you need time, that's what we're doing now. That, that's been the day's job, given the, uh, the conditions to have this, to house the animal, to keep it away from other, uh, humans and lots of animals.
Okay. Uh, my last new order of new business, I see the appointments, the chief is retiring, and all of the appointments. What we haven't talked about, or I haven't asked you yet, is why Mr. Mitchell was fired and why there was no plaque for him, why there was no any acknowledgement. He's just here one day, he's gone the next day. And I believe that everybody that's worked here before, good, bad, or different, has touched somebody's life, and it feels like he's just gone with no, no, no anything. So can you just kind of, uh, say why he was fired in that particular moment?
Um, trustee Brown, all due respect, he was not terminated. Uh, village administrator was not terminated, um, but it is the village of Glenwood's ordinance, uh, as the incoming mayor, that the appointment of the previous, um, administration terms expires with that of the mayor.
But if the mayor decides to keep whomever they so choose from a previous administration, is there, like, is your option to keep whomever you want or let go? I haven't seen that ordinance to state that the village administrator's role expires with the new administration.
Um, trustee, uh, Brown, this is a special meeting, so we certainly can, um, the, uh, letter, uh, was included in the board packet, and we can certainly have that conversation, but this is a special meeting. And we would like to, um, move forward with the agenda items that's on the, um, special meeting, so, uh, if not, I can't see. We have a couple of business we'd like to, um, call a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'm sorry.
What happened? Are we having a motion for, for this? There's no, that you mentioned.
So we have a motion to adjourn. We have motions, uh, called, uh, we have a first and a second. We have a first and a second.
Trustee Brown?
Oh, yes.
Trustee Hannah?
Yes.
Trustee Mosley?
Yes.
Trustee Rowland? Trustee Taylor? Trustee Williams?
Uh.
Thank you everyone for coming out. I appreciate you for the time.